I'd like to call the reorg meeting to order. If you'd all stand for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Our first presentation, I know the board and I would like to thank outgoing board member Jeff Hyde for his six years of service to the board and to the students and the community of the Oakfield Alabama Central School District. I know he couldn't be here today to accept this plaque, but on behalf of the board and myself, I'd like to publicly thank him for his six years of service again to the students and to the Oakfield School District. I don't know if anybody else would like to say anything?
Sure, so here's the plaque here and maybe Jeff will be listening at home in a couple of days. Maybe not. Well, thank you Jeff for everything, for the six years that you spent with us and maybe we'll see him here again at some point in the next few years, we'll see.
Terry, do we have anybody else that wanted to address the board?
Mr. Engel, Christian and Carly.
Okay, I'll call you then. I gotta put all my thoughts here together. My name's Ed Engel and I'm your Bozey rep. I'm here during your reorg meeting to ask you to join the Farm Bureau. Just like you belong to the New York State School Board Association, like you belong to rural schools and other associations. My guests are Carly Smith from Oakfield and Kirsten Gerald from Alba. And I want you to hear their prospects, what they thought of the program later on when I finish up here. When we started the drive to get Ag back in the classroom, who was the first one we called was the Farm Bureau. I would like to have you join organizations whose goals and objectives are much in line with our school, saying rural schools and community grow together better. Partnering, collaboration, strength of numbers, a unified voice is important in today's economy for success. Farm Bureau is an independent, non-government voluntary organization. Ag is our largest economy. It is the voice of 28,000 farmers in New York State. Farmers are the largest landowners and pay the most school taxes. I believe that membership will increase our visibility as a school district, show the Ag community that we are with them and we support them. It will help Julia, I always pronounce her name, our new FFA district president, when she makes visits to different organizations that her school belongs to the Farm Bureau and supports Ag. Farm Bureau raises and supports funds for regional and state FFA programs and events. And I've been to a couple of fundraisers myself. The Genesee Farm Bureau offers a thousand dollars scholarship to any graduating senior. Nationally, the FFA and the Farm Bureau signed a memorial agreement to work together to grow leaders, build communities and strengthen Ag education. Your Genesee Valley Bozey's Rural Schools Association are both members of the Farm Bureau and the Grange. Rural School also sponsors two $1,500 scholarships to the FFA speakers contest. The dues are $75 a year or $99 for two years. The Engels feel so strongly about this that we're willing to pay for the dues. Try to simple make it, do you have any questions or have any problems with it?
So I think we had, was it $55,000 to start the FFA program from the state? And I'm sure Farm Bureau was a big part of making sure those state funds are earmarked for the FFA.
That was the first one I contacted, Matt, when I went out there to, who to contact, who to make, you know, with. And Ranson Hofer and that, so. So I'm saying they support us, we're a big community. No problem? Okay, well, Carly, go ahead and tell them about your Ag experience here in school and the FFA, just briefly doing.
Okay, well, I've been in FFA for two years, I'm joining it again next year. I'm the vice president, it's given me a lot of good opportunities. I went to state convention and national convention. This year at state convention, I was able to do the TTE, SAE, not SAE, LD, which means I can like go against all different kids throughout the state and I gave a presentation, but like for little kids on like leadership skills, but it was Ag related. So it was like taking animal skills and like how we interact with animals and use them when we are interacting with people. So that was really cool, I placed eighth in like the state. So I was able to do that throughout FFA and then that's like a big end of the year thing, but throughout the year, there's many different opportunities that we can do, like just in the classroom and then the barn. And we're doing a lot of new things, so that's really cool and I think it's a really good experience. So thank you for letting us do that and I hope that we can continue it.
My name's Kirsten Gerald, I was in the program from day one. I've seen it grow, I think it's been really good. Thank you guys for letting us put up that really nice barn out back. I think that has helped a lot too with this program, teaching kids. Did you have a cow? No, you didn't have a cow, okay, nevermind, forget it. So Emma had a cow. Jared Graham had a cow and then we bought two other cows, which all Ag classes have contributed to that and have learned somehow from that. We also have pigs, we had chickens, we kind of got rid of chickens because chickens are kind of a pain in the butt. And they just weren't really helping us any, so. But anyways, we had chickens, those, they were a good learning experience too, to not have chickens in the barn. But, so anyways, I think this program needs to keep growing more and more. We need to figure out ways to keep, you know, increasing our numbers. We need to keep going, even though I currently graduated last weekend, so I can no longer be in the FFA, it's kind of sad. I was thinking to myself at the, at our banquet that we had, I'm like, man, I'm like, this is gonna be my last FFA thing. It's kind of, it kind of stinks, but I hope, you know, generations behind me will be able to have the same experiences I have with seeing cows, seeing pigs, working with them. Because even though, you know, you own one of the biggest dairy farms in Genesee County, actually probably the biggest dairy farm in Genesee County, not many kids still know, you know, what it's like to work with cows or what it's like to work with pigs, you know what I mean? There's so much more, we can teach more kids. It's not even just about the cows and the pigs. Me, I'm going for mechanics, you know, Mr. Hoffines has done his small engines and welding class through FFA. And there's also competitions, like she said, in the FFA, like state convention, national convention and just other, you know, different fairs and stuff, so. But I think you guys should support this because they've supported us a lot. And I think we need to kind of just keep growing to keep next generations into agriculture because it is starting to become a dying breed. I graduate of 31 kids, I know it's a small number, but I am the only farmer of 31 kids, so.
Chris, wait, tell them about the national convention with 65,000 kids in Indianapolis.
Actually, she could say more about the national convention.
Well, I went to national convention two years ago as a freshman. I wasn't supposed to go, it's supposed to be for upperclassmen and there was no one else left to go, so I got to go. It was a really good experience. There's so many, there's people from all across the United States, plus Puerto Rico and somewhere else, I think, I don't know. But it's really good and there's like a lot of different people there and everyone has a different FFA experience, even though you're all in the same club. So that was super cool to like talk to different kids and see what they're doing in their chapters and how we can implement that into our chapter and keep growing. And there's like a giant ex-convention center, I think they call it. And there's colleges from all over the place and different agriculture companies. So we can talk to them and see other ways that we can grow and like how Farm Bureau is, like just keep working with different people to try and expand our chapter.
And like she said, we've been working, we've been talking to Byron Burge and we got some ideas actually from Albion, you know, with like kind of how to, you know, get the ball rolling when we first started. Cause I mean, we really didn't have much, we just had $55,000. And it's kind of like, well, how do we use it, you know? How do we go about, you know, taking $55,000 and making more out of it and helping kids learn from that, you know what I mean? You know, isn't $55,000 nice? Yeah, but it doesn't teach kids anything. You know, we need to implement that somehow to keep teaching kids about farming and stuff.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What happens to the animals during the summer?
So they're actually going through the 4H program. Well, Emma and Jared's are, they joined 4H like as co with FFA. So they're in 4H and they're taking their animals to the fair next two weeks. And they will go through the whole process like every other 4H member does, show the cows. They also went to other shows throughout the year, so they're prepared and they'll show them and then they will auction them off. The other two, I believe, are going to market next week. So they're just used as a learning process and then we sell them, we get money back and we put them, put the money back in the program to get more animals next year.
Do you have feeder pigs or do you have a firewood saddle?
Nope, we have feeder pigs, so those guys will be going in July, Monday.
I think they've left.
They haven't left yet? They haven't left yet, they're leaving, they're, I think they leave soon, like in the next two or three weeks.
They're gone before fair, I think.
Oh, are they? Oh, okay. This is why I'm just the treasurer.
Chris says Monday.
Yes.
Monday, okay, going Monday.
Sully Bear and the pigs are going Monday. Okay.
So do you name them?
Yes.
They named them. The animal science class is in the barn all the time. I was in welding and Christian was in independent study, so we weren't in the barn as much as other members, but yeah, they did name them.
You and the pigs are named too, just, I don't know.
So we have an alumni chapter, Christian, for FFA, so it's not over just because he graduated.
Yeah.
We've got a dinner in October and we'll need help, so this continues forever.
Well, I'll be like four hours late.
You can tell that.
I'll text you.
That, no, that, yeah, that way, I'll be four hours that way.
Where are you going to college?
Cobal School.
What are you gonna study?
Ag mechanics?
Ag mechanics.
Yep. So keeping it in the agricultural world?
I have another question. Is there, have you branched out yet or do you have any plans to branch out into any of the plant-based agriculture? Maybe not on a grand scale, like five thousand acres of corn, but.
I thought, I had this crazy idea that I wanted to start doing hay because right now hay is kind of a moneymaker, but I, cause you know as well as anybody else, hay's kind of that thing that we haven't really gotten a lot of. Like last summer, we had no rain, so it didn't grow. And then this year, it's just rained all the time and you still can't get it. So, I mean, now we're kind of starting to get to it, but. A lot of horse people like hay too, like small square, well, we call it idiot squares, cause.
Be careful, I'm a horse person.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with them.
Small squares.
Small squares, yeah.
Yeah. You can have your large squares and your small squares.
Large squares are easy, you just go right with a tractor and you go stack two high, put them on a trailer and. Or you do the round bale, or you do the round bales where you just set, do the spikes and that's it. Small squares, you gotta like. Oh, great. That's like 600 more than I had to unload, yeah.
That's how we build our muscles and our.
Oh, yeah. But yeah, I had nothing against small squares, actually. It's just a joke we have.
Well, you're going into mechanics, so you want to use the big equipment, I understand.
So what's your thoughts, $75 are well spent, dollars, I think.
Definitely.
And especially when you hear from them, not from me, but from them, so.
Well, we appreciate your donation too, sir.
We thought for three years probably would be better.
But this is the time to do it during the reorg, the reorg organizations you're complying to, so. We'll be doing that a week from now at Bozey's thing.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed, thank you.
Good luck at the fair, pass on our good wishes.
Thank you.
Moving on, all board members and new board members, you have one of you, your oath of office. For new and re-elected board members.
I want to hear Justin say this. Stand up for your right hand.
We sing the school song.
Let's do this right.
I think, I think together as a board, we can read that aloud together as, as one of.
For us, for me, thank you. I do so.
As a pastor of the state of New York. And I will.
A school board member according to best liability.
I'll take those at the end, the votes of terms we have on record. Now that you've been sworn in as board members, next item is the election of the board president. I call for nominations for the board president at this time. Nominate Matt Lamb.
Second.
There's a nomination for Matt in second, anybody else? Any other nominations for board president? So there's a nomination for Matt, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hopefully Matt accepts that. Has he accepted?
Yes. Accepted. Congratulations. So Matt, I have the oath of office for school board president.
Take care of that, I guess we'll take nominations for vice president.
Don't you have to take your oath first?
Oath is taken. Any interest in vice president?
Nominate Jen Kirk.
A second? Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Jen Kirk as vice president? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Congratulations, Jen.
Okay. So we're down to appointment of other officers, right? Be resolved that items 62 through 68 be approved via consent agenda for the nomination. So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Appointments for Board of Education be resolved, items 72 through 713 be approved via consent agenda for the nomination.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Let's see, 8.1 be resolved, items 82 through 85 be approved via consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? That was 82 through 86, right?
Yes. I'll fix that.
Okay, let's see. Be resolved items 92 through 94, 92 through 93 be approved via consent agenda?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Let me know if there's someone here, we're gonna have discussion about Farm Bureau. And the 10, 1, 102 through 108, be resolved that be approved via consent agenda?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Be resolved that the bonding personnel for 2019-2020 school year be approved as follows, as is written there, have a nomination?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Be resolved items 122 through 123 be approved via consent agenda?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Be resolved that OES be authorized to partake in cooperative bidding through GVA, EduTech and hearing one Bozey's for 2019-2020 school year?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Be resolved items 142 through 144 be approved via consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I want to ask John for a clarification. I got your response, but. My question was, is there a parent advocate because that wasn't listed as a member? And you said there isn't a standing one. And then gave two names of people, I was familiar with Heather's name, but not the other person. Is she employed by the school district as well?
No, she's not. Really, there's, there's two, two tiers to it. Parents can obviously bring their own advocate.
Right.
Sometimes parents feel that there should be another parent advocate, but they don't have one of their own. So sometimes they will ask the district. So depending on if parents are comfortable with the school employee being a part of it or we also reach out to the other parent who is just a parent of the community that would attend.
Is that person familiar with special ed issues?
I believe so. I have not met her personally, but yes, I believe so.
The school employee question I had for clarification was, nothing against or wouldn't fully support that person's capabilities, but that person holds a non-tenured position and therefore doesn't have any protection. So is that a good idea for her to be in that position? When if she's going to advocate for parents and students, that might not be what administration would like? Would that make her in any way vulnerable?
No, that has nothing to do with her evaluation or her job here as a school employee. It's, it's just an advocate, it's somebody that's there to, you know, bring some insight, bring some recommendations and be a part of the discussion during a CSE meeting, so.
Right, and I, I was fully confident that she could do that. I just was concerned that, that would put her in a vulnerable position if she felt the need to advocate for something that wasn't popular with administrators or, and I wouldn't want to see that happen. So that's what I wanted.
No, and, and those meetings are confidential, so nothing that happens in that meeting, whatever happens and whatever decision is made by the committee, that's all confidential, so that would never be leaked out to somebody's.
Well, it's all full of administrators, that's the whole list of people that are also on the table.
But that would be nothing that would transpire outside of that meeting into something else.
So they would never retaliate against her or, okay. Cause I wouldn't want her to be in that vulnerable position. Okay. It's not that I, again, didn't question for abilities, I think she has them. I just didn't want her to be compromised anymore.
Sure. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? 15.1 be resolved that denounce back E be appointed as a Medicaid compliance officer for the 2019-2020 school year?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Uh, let's see, 16, establishment of the district mileage reimbursement rate be resolved of the current IRS mileage rate be established as a district reimbursement rate for the 2019-2020 school year?
Seven.
Any discussion?
Do you know when state ed's gonna set those rates?
When do they set those?
Mileage?
Mileage reimbursement.
That's done by the IRS, so that's.
Tuition rates.
Oh, yeah, that's not done for this year until they have all of our expense information written. So that won't happen until December. So 7, 18, 19 gets retroed back in December of 2019. Because they use actual expenditures that you put in, what that I put in from our report at year end. And so our final numbers aren't done until September, we have to have those into the state reporting system by the end of September and then they come out, they spit out a results in December.
It's based on like an average cost per student?
There's different, they have costs for gen ed kids and then for special ed kids. Any asset in the cost per student?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? School cafeteria prices be resolved with detached list for school lunch prices be in effect for 2019-2020 school year?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Use of school facilities and transportation by outside for-profit organizations be resolved with the following rates be approved for the use of school facilities and transportation by outside for-profit organizations for the 2019-2020 school year?
Seven. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What about for nonprofit organizations, do we allow them to use it without cost?
Pretty much so, depending on what the event is, but yes, our facilities are usually open for, for free use as long as it's available. Yeah, so we don't care.
Okay.
Any other questions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? 19.1 be resolved, 192 through 195 be approved via consent agenda?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Haxton Scholarship Fund, so we broke this one out because we'll need to appoint the school board member to be on the Haxton Scholarship Fund Committee. I've served for the past few years, I volunteer to do it again if nobody else really, really wants to be on. I do enjoy being on. Okay, so you can write me in there and I guess I'll be getting approved with that. So be resolved the following persons be appointed to the Board of Directors of the Haxton Scholarship Fund for the 2019-2020 school year?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Committee assignments, so we need to come up with who's gonna be on these committees, the tech committee.
I would like to be on the tech committee, but we would have to have another discussion about its role and what it does. Cause at the last committee meeting, unlike all the other committees that seem to function and make decisions and have input and produce something, that, we were informed that, that, according to Mr. Crown, that that committee is only an advisory committee. So I would think that that committee needs a little reworking if it's merely an advisory committee and doesn't have the same function as the other board committees. But I would like to be on it again.
Okay. Health and wellness?
It was me, I'll take it again if Phil wants to.
All right. Safety?
Aye. I'm willing to continue.
Okay. Code of conduct?
It's got a lot of work, but I'll keep doing it.
Thank you. I'll do the Haxton, SOAR.
Who's currently?
You want to be SOAR?
Who's currently on SOAR? It's off of it now.
Bonnie and myself. So it'll be three of us, I think we've got four interested, are you interested?
I am, but if Justin wants to do it, that's fine, go ahead.
Bonnie, well, are you interested, Bonnie?
If nobody else wants, yeah.
Sounds like those two want to, do you?
I care one way or the other, if I'm fine with it or without it.
It sounds like Justin and Chris are interested, is that okay?
That's with you, man?
Yes. Okay. Okay, be resolved that the, just decided upon Board of Education members be appointed as committee members for those following committees for the 2019-2020 school year?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Be resolved that the reorganization meeting be adjourned at 6:30?
Seven.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Okay. Stanford plus your flag, parade.
The flag of the United States of America. The entity of my life for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, call this meeting to order at six thirty. I don't think we have any presentations for this. Unapproved minutes be resolved with the minutes of the six eighteen, twenty nineteen regular meeting be approved. We have a motion?
So. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Don't think we have any visitors, so assume no visitor requests.
Nope.
Uh, warrants be resolved after an audit of the bills, payment of the six thirteen and six twenty warrants, internal claims, audit reports be approved.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. We're on to the second reading of two policies. John, I don't know if you take away on the.
Sure. This is the second reading of those two policies that F M L A, um, again, pretty self-explanatory, the board may just wanna review, um, the timeframe. There's a part in the F M L A, um, policy in regards to, computing the timeframe of the twelve-month period for which F M L A is being requested. Again, not that changes need to be done, but the district has to customize, you know, by choosing the A, B, C, D for calculating the twelve-month period upon the request.
Why don't we start there?
Sure.
Sorry. I'm the one who, I'm the one who uses this one probably the most. Cause I have to send the letters out to, um, the staff, so right now we currently use the rolling twelve-month period. So if we just select that for consistency purposes.
So D.
It's helpful. Cause that's what we're doing.
Okay.
And then, it says, um, district option. Uh, employers may, but are not required to have employees use paid leave concurrently with periods of F M L A. Um, we do require that they use them concurrently, just because it's, we wouldn't want to have somebody not paid for three months and then, um, extend that leave, especially when, um, the majority of our staff are teachers. We want them to use their, um, the sick time that they've earned, that's what it's there for. And both, uh, unions have sick bank as well, so they can, they can use that if they apply and approve to that, but they're union, so. And that's very typical, that you would use your leave, uh, concurrently.
So then they don't really have family medical leave, do they?
Yes, because no, if you're, if you have a medical condition and you have to be out for twelve weeks, you're not gonna have, most people don't have twelve weeks of, of time, so they, they do get that, but.
It may not be paid, so you.
Right.
If you've got the bank, you've gotta use it, if you don't have it, you still get it.
Right. I mean, it's just like other forms of, of comp. Before you're gonna, before our workers' comp will kick in, for people that are injured on the job, they have to use their sick time and or, that, that gets reimbursed after the fact, so.
But once that's exhausted, then you have access, once you've used your sick time, then you would.
Right. Well, F M L A would run concurrently with your sick time, so say somebody, um, in the union, um, is pregnant and has to be out on F M L, and, and wants to use their F M L A. They would use, say they only have, I mean, we have a couple instances, they have six weeks of sick time or six. They can take up to that twelve-week period, but six weeks of that will not be paid.
Right.
So I, and that twelve-week limit was put on there so that, uh, staff is not abusing that. Because what happens is then you're getting your, your benefits for those six weeks without having worked to receive them, potentially. You know what I'm saying? So they want, they're trying to.
So your health insurance is still active.
Correct. Your health insurance and your job still stays, so.
And that's the way the contract reads?
Their contract doesn't read any, their contract doesn't read anything, it's based on the policy.
So if Wendy breaks her, both her legs and can't work, she has to use all of her sick time that she is available, and then the rest of it up to twelve weeks, so.
F M L A would kick in if she has a serious medical condition, she would also use her sick time at the same time. If she ran out of that time, then we can't penalize her within that twelve weeks if she's not better.
So she uses up her, let's say she had six weeks of sick time. Then.
After that six weeks, she's still.
She only gets six more weeks of family medical leave. It's not like.
You get twelve weeks, yep.
What if the doctor doesn't clear her back to work, like say.
Right.
Then she doesn't have to come back to work, right, until the doctor clears her?
Right, but it's not like she used her sick time and then, when that was out and the doctor said, oh my gosh, there's complications, and so, or two broken legs aren't healed, sorry, and she doesn't get twelve on top of that.
Correct. That is correct.
Those extra six are unpaid anyway.
Right. And then hopefully that would be, be a summer or something bad happen.
Hopefully.
Well, well, if my six weeks ran out, then it would kick in at the same time.
Yes. Well, and then, so if it fell in the middle, she, that would extend.
Right, it's, it's talk about summer here, something would happen.
If what fell in the middle, it would extend.
So if she broke them, uh, uh, at the beginning of June, and then it needed to extend, the, the counting would be that four weeks, and then continue to count in, in September.
Six weeks in September.
Yeah, so it wouldn't.
Four weeks.
Yes.
If that happens, make sure you do it right.
Yeah, make sure you do it.
If that happens, the first person I'm calling for.
Yeah.
There goes the summer.
So this is all basically required and legal, um, and we're already doing it and following it. So everybody's aware.
So can you just, can we write this policy as we're discussing it right now? If we're gonna approve this at the next meeting, so that we get rid of, it's D you said, right? Not A, B, or C. So we just get rid of A, B, and C?
Yep.
And we get rid of the yellow highlighted stuff that talks about customizing, but basically just write the policy as you're proposing, as we're proposing it be, and we'll approve it. As it's written. Was there any other?
Yeah, so we can present that to you, um, as stated for the next board meeting, third reading.
Is there anything else anybody wanted to talk about in that policy? Okay, let's do that next one.
And then, um. Sorry. Uh, the comprehensive student attendance, um, I had included my weekly memos, just some of my notes in regards to, I know, basically, excused and unexcused is required, um, by the state, and so, we just have to review what we're using as excused and unexcused. Now, I know, uh, Lorna brought up last time, given, you know, given our community is farming and missing school for opening hunting season, is that excused or unexcused? Um, that is really, again, um.
I would be more working, hunting was a separate issue for working on the front, just to clarify.
So, um, again, if, if that's something that the board wants to change, um, currently hunting or hunting on opening day is an unexcused absence. If that's something that the board wants to make an excuse, that would be something that, that you could certainly decide upon. And part of my notes really goes back to, um, the process. I, I do have a little bit of a concern if we are restrictive in amount of absences that a child has before they are physically dropped from a course. The concern that I have is we do have students that, um, currently right now in the contract, if a student has more than twenty-seven absences in a course, um, they could very easily not receive course credit. The concern I have with that is, what if the student is still actually passing that course? Um, that there may be some outstanding circumstances that a student has twenty-seven absences. You may just want to be a little generic in that, um, you have a process that the word may not receive, depending on the circumstance, um, in regards to receiving credit for a course. And if you go down to, um, the next page, in regards to notice of minimum attendance standards intervention strategies, you do currently have a policy and a, and a, and a procedure, which I will be honest with you, I don't know how, to the letter of the law, it's been followed in the past, but you do have five phases of notification. So as a student, um, would next year with this board approval, um, in a full-year course, meet ten absences, a letter would go home stating to the family and the student that there's ten absences. After fifteen, there's a notification and a personal phone call. After twenty, there's actually a meeting with the, you know, more so, this is for middle school, high school, more so high school because it actually deals with credits, um, a meeting with the parent and the high school administration. After twenty-five absences, um, there would be a superintendent meeting with me, and then, um, after twenty-seven, then there would be a hearing for denial of, of a course. That is actually currently in the policy, um, which I would say that you would probably still like to keep. But you have that flexibility on those number of days? I don't know if that is something that you want to change or you want to keep.
I would like there to be flexibility. Because the other part that I asked about, unexcused and excused absences, um, I don't think it's fair for students who are minors to be penalized if their family takes them on a vacation. In the past, as a teacher, I was given direction that I could not allow students to make up work that they missed if they were absent for illegal, being taken away by their parents on a family vacation. Now, whether I approved of the family taking them on that vacation during school hours or school days is immaterial. The, the child had no, even if he's a big hairy adolescent child, he has no control over that. His parents made the reservations, so.
You're saying the flexibility on the twenty-seven days thing, like he was.
Well, that might be, currently going on vacation is an unexcused absence in our policy, or in the.
Now, that being said, within the policy, when you're talking about the number of days when a letter would go home that you have missed ten days of school, it doesn't matter if excused or unexcused. You're not here, you're not here.
Right.
So, you know, we have to mark it per the state as, is it excused or unexcused? But, to be honest with you, when a child misses ten day, ten, ten days, whether they're excused or unexcused, a letter's gonna go home. I'd like to have the flexibility of, you know, behind the scenes, understanding, okay, you're receiving this letter because you took two weeks vacation, whether they're excused or unexcused, you know, we have that flexibility of, of understanding the reasons behind their absences, so to say. I, I don't wanna really get bogged down with the excused and unexcused, it's the rest of the wording, having that flexibility of stating, do we know why you're absent, and, you know, like you said, um, I mean, a child's gonna get marked absent if he does go on a family vacation. Whether you, again, whether you mark it excused or unexcused.
Well, it's two issues, I would like you to have that flexibility to review the list, and then to make a judgment, your best judgment call. I want there to be consistency in the policy, but I would like you to have that flexibility. If the state is keeping a record of excused and unexcused, I don't know what the state wants that record for, or where that information is going, but if it's gonna ever come back to bite a student, I would like it. If they, it was an absence they had no control over, I would like it to be marked excused. If, I'm sure the parents here have taken their children out of school for a reason they thought was valid, and didn't realize perhaps, until you get up to the adolescent age, what the kid faces when that's an unexcused absence, and the disapproval and the mark against you and the block.
Lauren, twenty-seven days is, is a, is a large number of days.
Yes, it is.
And when you move that twenty-seven, I mean, if one of your students missed twenty-seven days of content, they probably, under most circumstances, shouldn't be receiving credit for your class.
A lot of students are extremely diligent, made up every single thing and stay after school.
I haven't experienced that in too many cases. When I get to twenty-seven days, that kid should probably be seeing me for another year. Very rarely do I have kids that are, are able to, to teach themselves at home or have the help.
Well, I didn't say teach them at home, I said, they stay after school, they make up their work, their, um, I have had it, so I, I just want.
I'm in favor as well of changing the, not a hard twenty-seven days.
Right, but to be able to review it.
It may be.
It needs to be reviewed, I think it was.
But again, we have Howie too, where when we start getting these absences, Howie's out there checking these houses to see why these kids are missing, we're not just letting them skip twenty-seven days and hoping for the best. We do have the procedures, but instead of saying twenty-seven days and you're done with that classroom, I would say be able to.
So, so.
That may, maybe.
That may.
Depending on their circumstances, and if they're passing somehow, and maybe they've taught themselves at home, then, then why completely penalize them and make them start all over again when we're.
Right, so, so there's, it's twofold here, so when you look at the excused and unexcused, the board's going to have to decide in this policy what they want as excused absences or unexcused absences. I'm hearing Lorna saying that, um, there are times where kids, you know, again, they're not gonna be here if they're on a family vacation. Do you want that an excused or unexcused absence?
I think it should be excused, it's not like I, I approve of parents doing it, but I.
Put a limit on that?
I don't think you should penalize students, again, as in Oak Hill, Alabama, we were directed as teachers, don't allow this kid to have any, don't allow the kid, if he comes in with a sheet of papers and everything perfectly done, don't allow him credit for that. And if the kid didn't oversleep and stay home playing video games, if the kid was taken to Acapulco by his parents, that's not the kid's fault. I should be able to, as a teacher, accept that she may not work and give him credit for it.
Well, can, can you not accept the work even on an unexcused absence?
We were directed not to.
Well, does that mean?
So I think.
That's the direction now?
Yeah, you're not gonna direct them.
That policy's not gonna come from us, though, I mean, that's gonna come from you, going down to the administration.
Well, I thought it was contained in here, as a teacher, I thought that was contained.
No, that's gonna go through the admin, and they're gonna decide whether or not they're gonna accept that.
And like I said, it, this is very, this is a difficult conversation, because there are excused and unexcused absences, but the bottom line is, if a kid is not here, he's not here. Um, teachers, I think, you know, if Wendy has a student that's been out a day or two, um, she, you know, she's gonna know whether the kid was sick or whether the kid was on vacation, and so those are discussions that we're gonna have to have with administration as far as what is work accepted or not accepted. If a kid's not in your class, for whatever reason, I would hope that there would be a grace period that the kid could turn in, but if a kid is going on vacation for two weeks, I think the timeline is, I mean, that'd have to be worked out with the teacher, you know, and I know teachers are hesitant to provide work to kids, you know, before the break, but is that kid now coming and staying after school and doing the extra things that we expect him to do to make up the work? That's something that administration and teachers would have to work out, I don't think that needs to be here in the policy.
Well, that's what I wanna make sure of, cause I was a teacher, I was directed by administration. It was appealed higher up by parents and students and teachers. Administration said, no, that kid can't have credit. Now I'm on the board, I don't want that policy to come from us, that kid does not have the ability to make up work. If, as I said, it was nothing the child was in control of.
But if you mark it as an unexcused absence, that deters the parents from taking vacations where they want. You know, so, at least if they know it's an unexcused absence, then they're less likely to take them off for two weeks.
I'd like to think so.
I would hope so.
As long as it doesn't come from anything I vote in favor of, that that's what we're gonna do to students, then I'm okay with it. But if it's coming from here, that, that's what we're directing administration to tell teachers, then I don't wanna be a part of that.
And that's not here, right, so that's gonna be an internal sort of build-in policy?
Yeah, and, and the, the. Yeah, and, and the, the policy that, that prior boards and that the district has had has come from the Erie One Policy Services. So that is their recommendation from the state on how the policy should read. There is some leeway into what we do. And part of this are your phases, um, which I do, um, you know, I do support as far as, I, I, I think it comes down to the wording that if a child reaches twenty-seven absences, um, they may lose, you know, course credit, kind of like what Justin had said. And I think it, I think it's a, it's a case-by-case basis. Why is that kid missing twenty-seven days of your class? If the kid is injured and he's on home instruction, technically, he's not in your class. That is an absence. Whether it's excused or unexcused, it, you know, obviously, it's excused. The kid is still missing twenty-seven absences. So you would probably say, okay, you know, the kid can receive course credit. As a kid that has twenty-seven unexcused absences, 'cause we have no idea where he is, we've done home visits with the SRO, we've tried to contact parents, we have no idea where this child is. That's a whole different scenario where, you know, we can, you know, strong-arm them and say, you're not gonna have course credit. So I think it's a case-by-
If this policy gives you that flexibility, then that's good with you.
And I think it does come down to that phase five where there's a hearing for the denial of course credit. And I think where, um, the policy does state that it would come down to administration and the superintendent in conjunction with the teachers, um, of having a hearing for, should they receive credit or not?
Okay. Is there anything else within that maybe to?
Well, like I said, I, I guess, um, it really does go back to what the board wants to decide as an excused or unexcused absence, um...
It sounds like you're saying it doesn't matter. So I don't know.
In the long run, it doesn't. I, we could sit here and argue whether we want a vacation to be excused or unexcused or, you know, opening day of hunting season to be excused or unexcused. Bottom line is, it really boils down to how many kids through the new, you know, Every Student Succeeds Act, we, it's still an absence, so.
If it doesn't really matter, then why don't we make them all excused? It must matter somehow.
Because there's a difference between the school knowing where the child is, whether they are, are on vacation and we receive a note from the parent saying, yeah, my child was sick and threw up and we didn't send him to school, than not receiving the note at all or having any conversation with the parent on why the child was not in school. That's the difference.
I'd say as a parent, it's something that you've noticed when a note comes home and it says your child was not in school and this is considered an unexcused absence. There's been times when we felt like with our children, we were taking them out for a good reason and it comes home with an unexcused absence. By hearing everything you're saying here, John, it's a cumulative number.
Right.
So to Bonnie's, to Bonnie's point, maybe it does matter, the, the family vacation, if that's excused or unexcused, and you're gonna be less likely if, that's the only, only reason I can come up with, like.
Well, if it doesn't matter, then make them all excused. 'Cause otherwise, I think it does matter, and I think-
It matters to our, our school as a district as far as record-keeping of, do we know why, why a child was not in school? If we know that the child was sick and the parents call that morning and say, my child's not coming to school because they were sick, we always say, okay, can you please bring in a note? That's an excused absence. But there are many instances where a child hasn't been in school for two or three days. We can't make contact with parents. And after three days, we do send our SRO out to do a home visit to find out where the child is. Um, sometimes we do get an answer, oh, the child was sick. Well, why didn't you let the school know?
So there are repercussions for the child for if they don't bring a note in?
Sometimes that, that-
The child has detention.
That categorizes as truancy, correct.
So the kid pays the price? And at the middle high school, the kid pays a price? I don't know about the elementary school.
Depends on the circumstance. But yes, there are times where, yes.
If a student has unexcused absences, too many in a row, because even though their parent made communication, the kid pays the price for the parent's decision. And that's the part that I think is unfair.
Well, if we have communication with the parent and it's understandable why the child was not here, those are excused absences. But if we don't hear from the parent and we're tracing the kid down-
And we either change vacation with, because that, the parents communicate about that.
So are you saying that if the students said they were going on vacation with their parents and they were gone for a week, they could get detention for that?
They can.
They can.
They could, and I don't know about now, could in the past.
But again, we have a lot of students that will leave school or not be in school because they're on a college road trip.
That's excused. That's educational.
Right.
It's excused.
A road test. Again, we know why they're out, but again, under this policy, it's unexcused.
I know.
Bottom line is, we can sit here and go, okay, is it excused or unexcused? Bottom line is, you're still absent or you're still leaving school.
As long as there are no repercussions.
And that's why this phased policy comes in. Um, once they reach twenty-seven absences, it doesn't say twenty-seven unexcused absences.
So how are detentions gonna be administered to middle high school students who have unexcused absences?
That's based on each child and each circumstance, and that's up to administration.
Well, so that's what I want our policy to cover. If a kid is gonna be penalized for a decision made by a parent, I don't think that's right. If, and maybe-
I will tell you that we don't penalize kids for being out of school on vacation. They don't come back and sit in detention for the next five days. We may ask them to stay after school because now there's work that needs to be made up, but they're not going to be penalized and have detention or in-school suspension 'cause they were on vacation with their family. I can tell you that that won't happen.
But that's what I wanna know.
But I don't think that needs to be stated in the policy. But... Those are conversations that we could have if and when that comes down to it.
Well, that's good.
Is there anything else then? So the same thing with this one, you'll format it, so there's the one, like, completely blank page in center? And then just some of these other things, where it says the district may or may not, and things like that. You'll format it so that it is as it will be in the policy manual?
Correct. And I do, and I, um, the student attendance policies are not personally hand-delivered to each parent and each student. We will provide them in the handbook that we provide on the website. So some of the old mitts and the crossing offs I have just reflects that.
Okay, so I guess I'll, so I can read this again? Next month. If we're gonna act on the fire barrel membership, where would we put that? We don't need to worry about that. It doesn't need to be board.
I don't think it needs board approval. We can, we can just tell us to pay for the, was it the ninety-five almos for the next two years? He doesn't cer- I don't think he needs to donate. I think we can.
I'll say no.
I think we can take care of it. Where's that district? I don't, you get nervous, as all business officials do.
Hey, neighbor.
Shvite Andrew.
Okay, well, let's move on to doing this and be resolved at seven-two through seven-five. Be approved via consent agenda. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Communications? Not much here. That's enough to say, so. Under communications, check on it.
Um, just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to welcome Justin to the board. I look forward to, um, doing lots of great work. It's a great board. We're moving forward. We're moving in the right direction. So welcome to the board and I look forward to, um, the relationship that we'll have and accomplishing some great things in the near future. Um, I'd like to thank Jordan and his crew for the job that they're doing right now. Obviously, you know, we're moving sixth grade back to this. There have been a lot of room changes. We've displaced Rob, um, a lot of room changes, a lot of things going on, and they have done a fantastic job. It's probably twice to three times the work that maybe they would normally not, you know, endure if we were just kinda having this as status quo. So I just wanna, uh, give a shout-out to Jordan and his crew. Um, they've already renovated the, the high school, uh, gymnasium. If you wanna take a look at that after you leave, it's all fantastic. It looks, it's all varnished and ready to go for the summer. Um, I also wanna welcome Connie Rockow, uh, our new director of CIA. She began yesterday, and she's already jumping right in. We already had her in a couple workshops already, so, um, we're excited to have her. We are posting for an elementary position, a full-time technology position, and a full-time teaching assistant position. So that should be already in the papers on the One Yearrick site and will hopefully be in the Buffalo Job Finder, uh, this coming weekend. So we'll get moving on those postings for the fall. And, um, Tim, I'm happy to announce to the, and to the rest of the board that the pool and fitness center will be open to the community this summer. The fitness center will be open Monday through Thursdays from five-thirty to seven-thirty, free of charge. And the pool will be open Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to eight, free of charge. And that begins next week through the end of August. So if the community's listening, uh, take advantage of that. It's fully supervised with certified lifeguards and certified staff, so enjoy. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, discussion around the table? Anything was submitted? Any, has anything popped up? Personnel, um, be resolved, I am ten-two through ten-five. Be approved via consent agenda?
So will.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say we accept, um, the retirement of Mrs. Gelder. With regrets.
I agree. My son just finished with Mrs. Gelder and she had, he had a wonderful year with her. She's fantastic.
So you had us do them separately, right? Appointments and all that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else on those ten through, through ten-five?
What's the name of the speech pathologist?
That'll be next.
Ten-seven, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be good. Ten-six.
Through ten-five.
Uh, all in favor in ten through ten-five?
Oh, in favor, aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes? Uh, ten-six, appointment of the speech pathologist. Recommend approving the appointment of Monica Dunleavy-Lang to four-year probationary position effective September first. Any motion?
No.
Second. Any discussion?
You're granting her one year of service as far as her ten years, so her tenure will only be for three years.
Okay.
She had six years previous, right? Wasn't she at full season? Seven years?
Yes. Yeah, correct.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Ten-seven, uh, be resolved the resignation of Jennifer Sterns effective, uh, July twenty-second. Be accepted?
So will.
Second. Any discussion?
She'll also be asked.
She just received ten years last meeting, right? Didn't she just get ten years?
I wish her the best of luck. I mean, admin position.
Ten years of teacher, so she's-
Yeah, she's moving on.
Yes. It was anticipated. You had to go through the motions.
Yeah, sure. Got it, got it.
Moving, moving up to admin, so good luck to her.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Ten-A, be resolved the resignation of Katie Mangus, uh, teacher assistant coach, effective June twenty-second, twenty-sixth. Be accepted?
So will.
Second. Any discussion? Say good luck to Katie. For her time here. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Ten-nine, be resolved the retirement request of Claudia Gelder, teacher, effective, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Be accepted?
So will. With regrets. And appreciation.
Second. Any other discussion? Regrets from Lauren, appreciation from Lauren and Bonnie? And myself as well?
Same. What's your best?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Just to let you know, Monica, the speech pathologist is here.
Okay.
So just wanted to introduce Monica to the board.
Hi, Monica.
Congratulations.
Okay, executive session. Be resolved, Board of Education, our executive session at, uh, seven-oh-four, purposes of contract negotiation.
So will.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?